Time hasn't arrived, councilors. I hereby call the City Council for March 13th, 2017. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilors, please stand, remain standing. Our esteemed colleague, Councilor Ann Beauregard's father passed away, Marcel Beauregard, age eighty-two, was a retired federal employee. And our thoughts, Councilor, with you and your family. If we could please remember Mr. Beauregard for a moment of silence. May he rest in peace. Mr. Clerk, we're going to go on to Agenda Item Number One.
The acceptance of the minutes of the February 27, 2017, City Council Meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
The appointment of Karen DeBrazard of 31 Frost Street, Brockton, Commissioner on Women's Issues for a one-year term ending March 2018.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Appointment of Ruth Moore, Brockton Commissioner on Women's Issues, issues for a one-year term ending March 2018.
Also refer to Finance Committee.
Appointment of Lisa Duquette to the Brockton Commissioner on Women's Issues for a one-year term ending March 2018.
Refer to Finance.
Appointment of Anne Marie Nie to the Brockton Commissioner on Women's Issues for a two-year term ending March 2019.
That too, councilors, refer to Finance.
Appointment of Janice Lebov of Brockton Commissioner on Women's Issues for a two-year term ending March 2019.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Appointment of Leona Martin to the Brockton Commissioner on Women's Issues for a two-year term ending 2019.
Refer to Finance.
The appointment of Maria DePina Montero, Brockton Commissioner on Women's Issues for a three-year term ending March 2020.
That too, refer to Finance.
Appointment of Nicole Gatling, Brockton Commissioner on Women's Issues for a three-year term ending 2020.
Also refer to Finance Committee, councilors.
We have the petition of Jean Francois Bernado, auto repair for motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 74B Plain Street, Brockton, in Clerk's Office, October 17, 2016. Hearing is signed for March 13, 2017, at 8:00 p.m., and Council, March 13, 2017. Fire Department has no objections.
Councilors, time hasn't arrived. I hereby declare the hearing open. If there's anyone here in favor, please come to the podium and state your name for the clerk. Is there anyone here? Sir, are you here for this Agenda Item?
Yes.
Please come up to the podium if you could. If you could give your name to the clerk, please.
Jean Francois Bernado.
Good evening, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Do you have any statement for the council?
Uh, no.
No statements at all?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else here in favor relative to this? Mr. Lennard, good evening.
Yes, Councilor. Gary Lennard, Campello Main Streets Manager. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Bernado for quite a few years. In my previous life, I was the property manager for 74 Plain Street where this business will be located. He's been working for somebody else on this property for years. I welcome the new entrepreneur in this area. He's a stand-up human being. His business practices...
If you could just take the mic, I'm sorry. Just pull it down a little bit, it's some static. Thank you, sir.
His principles of business is right up the alley of what we're looking for in Campello, and I hope the council gives him this license. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Anyone else here in favor? Anyone else here in favor? Third and final, anyone here in favor? I hereby close that part of the hearing at this time. Anyone here in opposition relative to this matter? Anyone here in opposition? Third and final, anyone here in opposition? That part of the hearing is closed as well. Now the matter comes before the council. Councilors, any questions for the petitioner? Councilor Falwell.
Mr. President, I move to refer this to the Public Safety Committee for further review.
Second. Purpose of that motion, if you could, for the record, please, Councilor.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You could just express to the people here and those watching the purpose of sending it to the public safety.
What we do, sir, is we hold the public hearing, and then we have you come before the Public Safety Committee very informally. There are five of us as councilors who serve. We go over the parking plan for the building. We go over other issues that are required for a garage repair license. We make sure that all the paperwork is in order, and then we send a recommendation back to the full council for a formal approval of the license. So, we've started doing that so that we'll know exactly the hours of operation, how many vehicles you anticipate having on the property. And again, it's very informal. You don't need an attorney or anything. You'll just stand before us and answer any questions that the councilors may have.
Okay. Councilor Falwell, thank you. And sir, just, just as a follow-up on that, there is a requirement from this body that you submit a parking plan. You need not hire a professional engineer or surveyor, you can do a hand sketch, but it needs to accurately describe and illustrate your parking plan for your place of business. That needs to be submitted to Mr. Zioli's office, the clerk's office, prior to Mr. Falwell and his capacity as Chairman of Public Safety of calling a meeting. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that. There's been a motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded. This matter is hereby referred to the public safety. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Refer to public safety, Agenda Item Number 10. Number 11, please.
Report to the Finance Committee for its meeting of March 6, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
Report to the Public Safety Committee for its meeting of March 6, 2017.
That too is accepted and placed on file.
Report to Real Estate Committee for its meeting of March 7, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the District Director, the Southeastern Regional School District, certifying that the amount to be apportioned to the City of Brockton for share capital and operating costs for the Southeastern Regional School District for fiscal period beginning July 1, 2017 is $3,730,029. This assessment is to be paid in full equal quarterly installments due September 1, 2017, December 1, uh, September 1, 2017, December 1, 2017, March 1, 2018, and June 1, 2018.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor, reappointing Karen A. Fisher to the position of Assistant City Solicitor full-time for a three-year term effective March 10, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Chief of Police, request an authorization to expend grant monies related to the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, fiscal '17, Senator Charles E. Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant, in the amount of $329,190.60.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
That too, accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council authorize appropriation of $462,200 from the Stabilization Fund to the Planning Personal Services Other Than Overtime, $34,500. DPW Water Enterprise Personal Services Other Than Overtime, $80,500. DPW Water Enterprise Personal Services Overtime, $3,000. DPW Engineering Personal Services Other Than Overtime, $57,500. DPW Engineering Personal Services Overtime, $3,000. Board of Health Personal Services Other Than Overtime, $150,500. Board of Health Personal Services Overtime, $2,000. Public Property Personal Services Other Than Overtime, $130,200. Public Property Personal Services Overtime, $1,000, to provide funding for the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal '14 through fiscal '19 with the Brockton Association of Engineers and Inspectors in accordance with the Cost Items Memorandum of Agreement.
Accepted and placed on file.
There's a communication from the CFO with a conditional certification.
Accepted and placed on file.
Going back to the... Going back to Item 19. Communication from the City Auditor certifying that the balance of the stabilization fund is $5,961,159.52 as of March 3, 2017.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, recommending that the City Council authorize the appropriation of $59,700 from the stabilization fund to provide funding for the cost of items fiscal '17 through fiscal '19, collective bargaining agreement with the Department Heads Union in accordance with the memorandum of agreement.
Accepted and placed on file.
CFO relative to the same with a...
Also accepted and placed on file.
Conditional certification.
Conditional.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council authorize the appropriation of $80,000 stabilization fund to Library Personal Services Other Than Overtime, $79,000. Library overtime, $1,000, provide funding for the proposed collective bargaining agreement fiscal '17, fiscal '19 between the city and the library union.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same with a conditional certification.
That also is accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor, in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council adopt the ordinance to replace in its entirety the current Chapter Eight garbage and trash of the revised ordinances of the city.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication to the CFO in accordance with that.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Order that the mayor authorize the grant easement to the town of Kingston and across over, under, along, and upon a portion of city-owned land situated on the west side of Lake Street in Kingston for purposes related to culvert and for stormwater management. End Council, February 27, 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Councilors, questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you could kindly plead to read this, if you could kindly plead, please read the roll. Thank you.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Beauregard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Hioneary.
Yes.
Falwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tenney affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
Order that the City Council authorize the acceptance of expenditures of the total grant in the amount of $150,000 from the Commonwealth of Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, fiscal '2017, Mass. Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant, the City of Brockton Fire Department, fiscal '2017, Mass. Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant Fund. These funds will be used for overtime necessary to maintain staffing levels, no match is required. End Council, February 27. Refer to Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Beauregard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Hioneary.
Yes.
Falwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tenney affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
Order that the City Council authorize the acceptance of expenditures of the total grant in the amount of $14,039 from the Commonwealth of Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety, fiscal '17, Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant, $10,643, and the Commonwealth of Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety, fiscal '17, Senior Safe Grant, $3,396, to the City of Brockton Fire Department, fiscal '17, Student Awareness of Fire Safety Education and Senior Grant Fund. End Council, February 27, 2017. Refer to the Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Beauregard.
No.
Cruz.
Yes.
Hioneary.
Yes.
Falwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tenney affirmative, one of the negative.
Orders hereby adopted.
Order that the City Council authorize the acceptance and appropriation of the total grant in the amount of $12,784 from the U.S. Department of Justice, fiscal '16, Bulletproof Vest Program Grant, to City of Brockton Police Department, fiscal '16, Bulletproof Vest Program Grant Fund. End Council, February 27, 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Councilors, questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Beauregard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Hioneary.
Yes.
Falwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tenney affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
To invite Mr. Paul Engel, the new Executive Director of the Brockton Public Library, to introduce him and present ideas on the future of the library system to the City Council. End Council, February 27, 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Beauregard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Hioneary.
Yes.
Falwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tenney affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
Resolve to invite Mr. Bill Carpenter, the mayor of Brockton, and not a designee to the City Council, to inform us as to the current status of all governing boards, commissions, and committees. End Council, February 13, 2017. Refer to Committee on Finance, that report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Beauregard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Hioneary.
Yes.
Falwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tenney affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
Order that the City Council hereby declare the city-owned parcel at 28 Frederick Douglas Way formerly the site of Hotel Grayson, assesses map 90091, Route 013, Plot 1, Frederick Douglas Way formerly High Street, as surplus and available for disposition. End Council, February 13, 2017. Referring to the Committee on Real Estate, that is favorable as amended in real estate.
Councilors, the question is on the amendment by a hand. Councilor?
Yes, I was wondering if we could possibly have the amendments read, and even if it's not stepping too far out of bounds, to have the chairman of the subcommittee explain kind of what the amendments were for and what the purposes were, just to let the councilors...
That's acceptable.
Thank you.
Councilor Rodriguez, you serve as chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, the amendments that we provided for this, for these three items, actually, 36, 37, and 38, we put on two stipulations. And I ran those ideas by our counselor, and he basically feels that we have, it's within our rights to do what we did. So, the stipulation would be, one, that the properties are to be sold, that has to be sold to entities that would generate taxes, meaning that we're not against the properties being sold to non-taxable entities so as long as they will generate taxes for taxation purposes. And the second stipulation is that the composition of the deciding body at the BRA will consist of BRA personnel and also include two councilors.
Two.
One, the ward counselor, plus an at-large counselor, to come together as a body to decide on the best use and the best purposes for these, for these two, for these three properties.
Mr. Chairman, how is the at-large, this is four at-large, how is that decided?
Well, that's something that we can kind of decide amongst ourselves.
Yes.
Once we know that, we can kind of, within, within the four of us, decide who goes based on availability in the sense.
Okay.
But at least one of us will go and become part of this, of this process so that we are, so that this body is actually represented on these, on these decision-makings so that we can make an informed decision and also inform our constituency is exactly what we're doing.
Thank you, Councilor, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a great idea, councilors. I think it gives us some, some input, and the fact that there'll be two members of this party out of the eleven sitting there, that, that's big, and that's huge. So, those that sit on real estate, thank you for your efforts. Councilor Cruz?
Just to point of parliamentary procedure, I believe that, Councilor, a large appointment would be yours to make as, I believe any appointment of a councilor to a board or a commission is the president's to make, so I believe that would be your appointment to do.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you. So, the question comes before us now for this agenda item. After, anybody have any other questions for the chair? I think you explained it pretty well. Question is on the amendment by a hand. All in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. All opposed, that amendment's going to carry. Now, the question's on adoption as amended by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the roll.
Mr. President, if we could, could we take them collectively? Since there were three properties with the same...
It was the same amendment.
Same amendment.
We can, we can, we can. That's in the form of a motion, it's properly seconded, to take 36, 37, 38 collectively. All in favor of taking it collectively? All opposed? They, they are going to be taken collectively if we could read those, Mr. Clerk.
Order that the City Council hereby declare the two city-owned parcels, 11/15 High Street, assesses map 091, Route 047, Plot 12-1, and map 091, Route 048, Plot 12, High Street, currently Frederick Douglas Way, as surplus and available for disposition. End Council, February 13, 2017. Refer to Committee on Real Estate, and that is favorably as amended. And then we have that the City Council hereby declare the two city-owned parcels at 47 West Elm Street, assesses map 091, Route 004, Plot 102, and map 091, Route 005, Plot 103, West Elm Street, as surplus and available for disposition. End Council, February 13, 2017. Refer to Committee on Real Estate, and those are favorably as amended.
Councilors, for 36, we already did the question on amendment by, by a hand. I'm going to do 37, 37 collectively. The question is on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed, the amendment carries. Now, 36, 37, 38 collectively. The question's on adoption as amended by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, if you could kindly read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Beauregard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Hioneary.
Yes.
Falwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tenney affirmative.
Councilors, those orders are hereby adopted.
Order that the mayor and our real estate custodian be authorized to accept on behalf of the City of Brockton a parcel of land consisting of 530 square feet, more or less, located at the corner of Main Street and Haywood Ave, owned by Cumberland Farms, Inc. of 1813 Main Street, Brockton, Mass. Said conveyance will correct an encroachment of the city sidewalk upon the property owned by Cumberland Farms, Inc. End Council, January 9, 2017. Refer to the Committee on Real Estate and Finance, a recommendation of those committees is favorable.
Councilors, the question's on adoption by a roll call vote? Mr. Clerk, please read the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Beauregard.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Hioneary.
Yes.
Falwell.
Yes.
Lally.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tenney affirmative.
Orders hereby adopted.
An order to amend Chapter Eight of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton be ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton as follows. Chapter Eight, garbage and trash, is hereby amended as follows. Section 8-3.1 definition.
That's referred to Ordinance Committee.
We have an appropriation of $462,200 from the stabilization fund to various departments to provide funding for the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Brockton Association of Engineers and Inspectors in accordance with the cost items of the memorandum agreement.
It's referred to Finance Committee, councilors.
We have an appropriation of $59,700 from the stabilization fund to various departments. CFO has certified this conditionally.
That also is referred to Finance Committee, councilors.
The appropriation from the stabilization fund to library personal services other than overtime, $79,000. Library overtime, $1,000, provide funding for the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the city and library union in accordance with the cost of the memorandum of agreement for fiscal '17 and '19. And there is a certification by the CFO.
It's conditional, it's referred to Finance Committee, councilors.
We have an appropriation of $329,190.60 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Securities, fiscal '17, Senator Charles E. Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant, to the City of Brockton Department, fiscal '17, Senator Charles E. Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant Fund. These funds will be used to pay for police overtime, father bills, mainspring, coalition work, express, graffiti removal services, old quality YMCA street outreach, and case management services, fiscal management services, parole officer expenses, mentoring for youth through Brockton, Christian mentoring initiative mass youth committed to winning, a match considered in kind service only.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Order that the City Council approves the changes to the Water Commission rules and regulations set forth in February 23, 2017 letter for the Water Commission.
Refer to the Finance Committee.
Resolve to invite Senator Michael Brady to respond to the City Council and assess to the status of the Gauntlet Valley.
That's referred to the Finance Committee.
Resolve, whereas on March 28, 2016, City Council order approving a downtown urban renewal district was introduced to the City Council, whereas the order provided that the mayor would submit the urban revitalization plan to Department of Housing and Community Development for final approval, whereas the plan as proposed would require the taking of land and a relocation of businesses, whereas the City Council has received no further information on this plan since the passage of the requested order in 2016. Now therefore be a resolve that the city planner be invited to appear before the Real Estate Committee of this council to report on the status of the urban revitalization plan, to discuss his efforts at community outreach on the plan, and to provide a report on those existing businesses that would be relocated under the plan.
Refer to the Real Estate Committee.
Resolve to invite Mr. Joseph Cottrell of National Grid to the City Council to provide more information regarding the condition of 136 manhole covers, 136 manhole covers located throughout the city, and if any further action will be taken to resolve this issue.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Resolve that the city solicitor is designee and a collector treasurer appear before committee of the council to discuss the policies, procedures, and financial data relating to taking possessions of properties, and be it further resolved that data relating to properties taken by tax title during the fiscal year 2016 and the fiscal year 2017 through the date of this resolve, including address assessed property value prior to tax title proceedings, amount of proceeds from sales of individual properties, name of persons or entities to whom property was sold and transferred, and expenses relating to taking possession of the properties to be made available to the City Council five
Counselors, before I ask for, if anybody has any moment of personal privilege, of course, there's an impending severe snowstorm going to be hitting us tomorrow. City Hall will be closed tomorrow. Also, Counselors, I just wanted to make it public to anybody that had an interest relative to the zoning board of appeals meeting that was originally scheduled for Tuesday, March 14th, has been postponed for one week until March 21st, 2017, due to the impending snowstorm. Location are to remain the same. Time is to remain the same. So, it will be held one week from tomorrow, which would be Tuesday, the 21st of March, and it will be held at 7:00 PM in the Arnoon School Little Theater on Belmont Street, Counselors, those that had an interest about that. Also, Counselors, I'd also like to thank all of you and all the citizens of City of Brockton that participated, and of course, local 144 and the firefighters for the 76th anniversary of the strand. We had a ceremony here at City Hall. It was always just so heartfelt and always so carried out professionally, and we don't forget those. And also, there was a book signing the night before at the Historic Society. Any late files or any...
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Counselors, I'm going to, the clerk has just made me aware of some communications
that hadn't been signed, but for house cleaning, I'm going to late-file them in my capacity, and I'll sign the communications. They're simple communications, Counselors. So, there will be a late file, and I will read the clerk. First of all, anybody object to the late file?
Make a motion, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded, to accept the late file. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Cruz. Mr. Clerk?
Communication from Chief of Fire requesting the acceptance of expenditures of a grant in the amount of $500 from Spectra Energy Foundation. These funds will be used to purchase a full gas meter to monitor air quality at emergency scenes.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Also accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.